Stores may be closed, the power may be out. So you may have to literally live out of this thing for a three-day period as an evacuating.
If you are someone with a disability, maybe you have a chronic health condition. For me, I have type 1 diabetes, I have an insulin pump, right? And so that's a critical piece that I need to plan for if I'm going to ever evacuate, or be away from my house frankly, for any amount of time, right? What we find often is that if people don't evacuate with their CPAP machine, with their oxygen concentrator, with their wheelchair, walker, then it can be difficult on the other end.
My name's Ulysses Palencia, I work in the 2-1-1 call center. I'm just a resident of Grass Valley. I have two daughters, a four-year-old and a one-year-old. In Nevada County, 2-1-1 is available 24/7. So what we provide for the community is information. That can be anything from directions to the resource centers. It can be letting them know where the fire is, you know, if they are themselves in an evacuation center, if it's a fire, if there's any information as to whether their power's coming back on during a PSPS. 2-1-1 gets the information that we provide directly from the county, so directly from the Office of Emergency Services. The whole team cares, we're all local community members, we all just want to help.
So we were all sleeping in bed on Thursday, November 8th, in paradise. And first, the house phone rang. Picked up my phone, it was my sister who lived a block or so away from us.
We were woken by a telephone call from my daughter. She said that we were being evacuated.
I left sooner than them. I had everything ready, they were on the way out the door.
There was not time to think about what you're going to take, what you're not going to take.
The night before the fire, I knew it was a red flag warning, and I knew that it was a high risk. So on my way home, I filled up the tank.
On our way out, we didn't get too far from the house, and we're watching the fire come down the hill.
There was a machine shop, right to my right, right there. And it had gas tanks and propane tanks. And I saw a lone ember kind of floating through, dancing through the air. And I watched it as it landed on the machine shop. In the time it took me to get my phone back into hand and to take a picture, it was engulfed in flames. And I knew that within moments, it would start exploding, and I would be dead. And just as I moved out of the range of the explosions, they started happening, and I prayed for the people behind me.
10-minute drive normally to Chico became almost four hours. So it was a long trip.
We started to hear a pattern. People kept telling us their story of how they escaped the campfire. And they talked about how, if it wasn't for my neighbor who came and knocked on my door to tell me there was a fire, I don't know that I would have gotten out alive. If it wasn't for my son, who lives next door, picking me up and putting me in their car and driving me out of there, I don't know how I would have survived. And so I started really thinking about this connection between isolation and how connected you are to your community, to your neighbors, to your friends, to your family, and how that can be really helpful in a time of a disaster.
So we were actually the beneficiaries of someone making that plan in advance, to have that group of people that they were going to call. And that, she saved my life that day, so absolutely, having that network really saved lives.
Find your five, the idea is that, you know, find trusted allies that can be there and can be responsive and will check in with you if a disaster were to happen.
So we recommend that you put people in your network that are down the street, that are maybe the next town over, that are outside the county, and maybe even outside the state.
The final tier of the Ready, Set, Go is that "go" piece, and it's simply that, it's "go." Evacuation information comes in two types. The first type could be an evacuation warning. This is essentially information that we're going to push out to the public, notifying them of a potential threat in their area where they may have to evacuate their home. An evacuation order is essentially that. We are telling people that it's time to go, there is an imminent threat to life, and we do not believe that you have much time to leave the area.
Code Red is an opt-in alerting system that will dial your number, it'll send you a phone call, a text message, and an email notifying you of an emergency. That message is sent from our office, the Office of Emergency Services. It's going to be very targeted to your area, and it'll be specific to you.
At 5:13, the phone rang with the Code Red call. And so as I was going up 49, I could look over to the left and see the flames in the canyon.
The next layer is for staff to actually be out driving in the areas with a high-low siren.
Good afternoon, everyone, let's open the meeting. Commissioner Millman, if you'll lead us in the pledge. Shelley, if you will call the roll, please, for your last time with us.
You're going to make me cry. All right, Commissioner Duncan. Commissioner Garst. Commissioner McEntire.
Here.
Commissioner Millman.
Here.
Chair Mastodonado.
Here.
Please note that Commissioner Duncan is absent today.
Thank you, and before moving on for any corrections to the agenda, I'd just like to say, Shelley, we are going to miss you. Shelley's been our clerk for how long? Almost three years, and she keeps us all in line and in order and in communication, and tells us where to be and when, and we appreciate it, and we're going to miss you.
Thank you, I'm going to miss you guys a lot.
Chair, we have no corrections to the agenda.
No corrections?
No.
Okay. Okay, now is the time for public comment. At this particular point in time, we will entertain comment from the community on anything that is not on today's agenda. So if you would like to address the planning commission on an issue, or just to talk to us about something, any item that is not on the agenda, now is the time. Seeing none, hearing none, I will close that public comment period. I see we have no commission business, nor consent items. And we will now move on to the public hearings. We have two today, both from my neck of the woods, down there in the Lake Wildwood community. So who is this? Maria, it's all yours.
All right, good afternoon, commissioners, everyone here. My name is Marie Maniscalco, I'm an associate planner here at the Nevada County Planning Department. I will be presenting to you today the Lake Wildwood dredging project. I just wanted to have a quick note to, though dredging is in the name of this project, this is technically sediment removal. Dredging refers to sediment removal when there is water still in the watercourses, which will not be the case here. This project proposes to remove sediment from Lake Wildwood every three to four years for a period of 15 years, so that is the proposed lifespan of this permit. The proposal includes removing approximately 20,000 to 50,000 cubic yards of sediment and disposing it on nearby parcels, which are also owned by the Lake Wildwood Association. The goal is to preserve the recreational and water retention capabilities of Lake Wildwood. Just a little bit of background about this project, the dredging, or the sediment removal operations have been ongoing since the 1970s. Similar scope of work to what you're seeing today has been completed with just grading permits since the 1990s. The county did adopt a mitigated negative declaration as a CEQA document related to this scope of work in 2001. And today, we're coming with updated permits based on our Resource Protection Code, as well as updated CEQA documents for this project. The entitlements that are being considered today include a use permit for disturbance within the 100-year floodplain, which is just the lakebed of Lake Wildwood, a management plan for impacts to watercourses, a management plan for trees, a management plan for rare, threatened, and endangered species and their habitat, as well as an initial study and mitigated negative declaration. As many of you are familiar, Lake Wildwood is located in western Nevada County, about two miles north of Highway 20, and about three and a half miles east of the Yuba County border. The three parcels involved in this permit include the lakebed parcel, and then two parcels located at 12440 Bosa Drive, and 12186 Halaire Road, just to the east of the subdivision boundary. As I mentioned earlier, all three of these parcels are owned by the Lake Wildwood Association. In this area, around the lake and including the lake, the zoning is R1, single-family residential. And then we get more rural zoning with general agricultural, the 10-acre minimum size for the parcels to the east where the sediment will be disposed. The area is developed with residential, recreational, and agricultural uses. Here is a site plan showing the areas that are proposed to be dredged in darker shading. It also shows the various watercourses, both seasonal and year-round, in green, along with their setbacks. So as you can see, the areas that are being targeted for dredge removal, for sediment removal, are the ones where there's naturally sediment coming in from all these different watercourses. Lake Wildwood then continues into Lower Deer Creek, to the west. I'm going to talk a little bit more in depth through the three main components of this project, which include lake drawdown, sediment removal, and then the disposal of that sediment. So the first step before work can begin is to draw down the lake. The lake will be drawn down by 10 to 12 feet in order to expose the lakebed and the sediment there. It will displace approximately 3,000-acre feet of water into Lower Deer Creek. This is controlled and monitored at the Anthony House Dam, which you can see in the lower right. No water will be prevented from coming into Lake Wildwood, and so you can actually see in the photo on the left, there's a trench cut to make sure that the water can continue to flow as it comes in. One of the main concerns, and one of the main things that we're addressing with this documentation in this permit, is potential impacts to salmonids. So at the location where Lower Deer Creek hits the Yuba River, which is several miles to the west of the project area, there in the past has been concern that an increased flow of water, which can actually cause confusion to these species, they're meant to be continuing up the Yuba, and if they feel that there's a big flow of water coming from Deer Creek, they'll go that way. Unfortunately, they then get stranded because the water levels will go back down, they can't continue their life cycle. So what we're looking at here, this chart shows the rate in blue of 2020. The drawdown was commenced around mid-October, was led out at a fairly steep rate, you know, upwards of 400 cubic feet per second, and then decreased around November 1st, when that 10- to 12-foot goal of lake drawdown was reached. In coordination with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, the project applicant has, and planning staff have developed an approach that has a more metered and slower pace of drawdown. So as you can see in red, where they're looking, the applicant is looking to start the drawdown around September 20th, that's a rough date, it'll depend a little bit on weather, and then finish up again around November 1st to commence the actual dredging operations. In addition, there will be, there's a monitoring and adaptive management plan to ensure that the water quality and the impacts downstream are less than significant. So once the lake is drawn down, the actual work begins. There will be two to three weeks of activity removing that large amount of sediment in the lakebed. They will operate from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday. This will be during daylight hours only, no additional lighting is proposed as part of this project. The heavy equipment will include swamp cats, which are a specialized type of tractor that's meant to work in muddy conditions, as well as excavators and then dump trucks. At the lakebed, there are two protected resources under the Land Use and Development Code, including the floodplain, which I'll talk about in a moment, and watercourses. This image here shows the floodplain in dark blue, which you can see is just the lakebed of Lake Wildwood. A floodplain management plan was prepared that determined that there were no impacts on development or downstream users, and in fact, this scope of work would reduce the risk of flooding to nearby homes by increasing the capacity of Lake Wildwood to hold water during a storm event. A watercourse management plan was also prepared in order to ensure less-than-significant impacts to the watercourses adjacent to Lake Wildwood. In order to do that, some of the conditions of approval that are included in this project include a limitation on, that there will be no vegetation removal to ensure that the banks continue to be stabilized. The equipment and vehicles are going to be limited just to specific designated access areas. These are the areas that have compacted or paved entry to the lake that have been used over the course of the last several decades. There will also be water quality best management practices put into place, including that canal cut that I mentioned earlier, monitoring of water quality, and careful maintenance and monitoring of equipment to make sure that there's no oil or grease spills into the lakebed. Once all of the, continually as the sediment is pushed into piles and ready to go, ready to leave the site, it'll be loaded into dump trucks. Those will be traveling along paved roads on established hauling routes. A dust control plan will be filed with the Northern Sierra Air Quality Management District. And there's also going to be a recorded road maintenance agreement for Bosa Drive. This is the road that is closest to the disposal sites to ensure that they're left in equal or better condition than before the project started. Now we've arrived at the disposal site, which is two parcels, over 68 acres in total. This project proposes seven acres of additional grading, which is the shape on the right side of the map there. As you can see from the aerial photograph, there has, there have been previously deposited sediment from the lake at these two sites, but the easternmost portion will be expanded to accommodate this next round of sediment disposal. For each time that this sediment disposal is going to take place, a new grading permit will be required to be pulled with the Nevada County Building Department. Grading permits require comprehensive erosion control. There are also protected landmark oak groves on the site, which is oaks of 33% canopy coverage or greater. One and a half acres of landmark grove removal is proposed to accommodate this, the incoming sediment over the next 15 years. It was determined due to the low quality of habitat on the site that the most appropriate mitigation measure for these impacts is going to be an INLU fee paid to the Bear Yuba Land Trust Oak Woodland Conservation Fund, which is in accordance with the Land Use and Development Code. There are a couple species of plants, including the Sierra Foothills Bordea and the Humboldt Lily that occur at the disposal site. Those are being avoided completely as part of the dredging, as part of the disposal This project is consistent with zoning and general plan designations, it is in support of surrounding residential land uses at the lakebed, and also is consistent with allowed low-intensity land uses at the disposal site. As detailed in the staff report, there are, this project is also consistent with several general plan policies, including policies related to management of private facilities on lakes, protecting development from flood hazards, cooperating with state agencies such as CDFW in this case, for habitat maintenance, establishing land uses that complement existing communities, and protecting water resources. An initial study and mitigated negative declaration were prepared for this project. They were published, it was published on February 2nd, with for a 30-day noticing period that extended to March 4th. All mitigation measures have been included as conditions of approval. During that comment period, we did receive comments from the Northern Sierra Air Quality Management District, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, and the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board. According to CEQA, it is allowed to replace mitigation measures that are equal or more effective, and to also make insignificant modifications to impact discussions without recirculating the negative declaration. The edits that were made, which I'll go over in just a moment, fall under that category, and thus, the initial study was not recirculated. For the Northern Sierra Air Quality Management District, we made edits to clarify soil erosion potentials and fine-tune mitigation measure language, it was more on a technical basis with how they prefer it to be written. For the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board, we included an updated full list of possible permits that could need to be pulled with that agency. And with CDFW, they've fine-tuned some of those mitigation measures related to special status plants. We included a further discussion of the INLU oak mitigation fee. They actually brought that, the water discharge rate, down to that 50, so what you're seeing in the current conditions of approval is in line with CDFW, what they would like to see to protect the salmonids. We also included a more in-depth chart of standards for the water discharge monitoring, and enhanced turtle and bird surveys at the lakebed. With that, the planning department makes the following recommendations: to adopt the mitigated negative declaration, to approve the three management plans, and the use permit. Happy to answer any questions, thank you.
Thank you, Marie. Before we move on with any of the commissioners may have some questions for you, Marie, I just, I want to, first of all, disclose that I did take a visit out to the property, I toured the project, was able to see it from the ground, not the 30,000-foot aerial overview, found it very interesting, and just wanted to get that out there. So I think we may have had some others as well.
I also went out to the site yesterday and toured, toured it as well.
And I guess I'm the third, whoops, I'm the third party also, so thanks to Jim Nelson for setting that up, and through Tom Cross for being my, get down there, Terry, you need to see this.
Do we have any comments, or would the applicant like to address the commission? Kevin?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Kevin Nelson, Nelson Engineering, here this afternoon, representing Lake Wildwood Association. Yeah, first off, would like to, also fully for full disclosure, I'm also a 30-plus-year resident and member of the Lake Wildwood Association, so it's always a pleasure to help within our community, and this is one of those projects, to be able to do that with. Also, want to, I was hoping to be able to introduce my sidekick, Jessica Hankins, I know she's watching remotely, and we also have several other consultants that have helped, from Holly Berger, our biologist, and Sean Jensen, our archaeologist consultant as well. And then, as you can see behind me, I've got several folks from our association, including our general manager, Robert Richardson, to my right there, Jim North, almost directly behind me there, our Public Works Superintendent, and several other members from our board, our lake committee, Commissioner McEntire referenced Tom Cross back there, Terry Teas is here, lots of other folks, Fred Cuberty from our Public Works Committee. So I'm not here by myself. If there's some other technical questions that I may not be able to answer, I might be calling upon some of those folks behind me as well. Also want to thank the commissioners who came out and toured that with us. Hopefully that was real helpful for you guys to see this whole facility from the ground. It is, as Marie pointed out, an operation that has been going on for over 40 years down there, and obviously, the lake is a vital component of our community, so, and it takes a lot of work to keep that lake viable and a useful amenity for the members. Obviously, got to thank Marie and the planning staff, they've done a wonderful job. This kind of looks like an easy, what's the problem here, it's something you've been doing for 40 years, kind of cleanup and sediment removal process, but as you commissioners saw as well, it's a little more complicated than that. Marie and staff has done a wonderful job presenting this, and really understanding the project as a whole, so I appreciate that. And yeah, with that, I don't really feel the need to duplicate the staff presentation, Marie's done a wonderful job presenting that. I've had the opportunity to meet with you and kind of go over some things out in the field as well, out there. So with that, I'm going to keep it kind of brief right now, and make myself available for any other questions you might have.
Thank you, Kevin. Before we entertain some, any short questions we have here, or we can just open the public hearing at this time and revisit afterwards, okay. So that being said, this is a public hearing, and this is now an opportunity for the public to come and address the commission if you have any comments on this particular project on the agenda. That being said, I'll open the public comment period. At this time, if you have anything to say, approach the podium, give us your name and address, and speak ahead. Seeing none, hearing none, I will close the public comment period on this item, and open it up to commissioners for questions or comments. Commissioner Garst?
I had a couple of questions for planning. In regards to the disposal site, when the grading plan is submitted, I just was wondering what requirements will be put in place in terms of the uncompacted fill? I'm assuming it's not being required to be compacted at the time of placement? And also wondering about, like, maximum fill slopes allowable? I noticed some slopes out there that exceeded 2:1, so just curious about how that's being handled.
Yeah, absolutely, and I'd actually, I'm curious if Nicholas McBurney from our building department might be able to shed some light on those questions.
Stockpiled materials are allowed to be deposited in an uncompacted fashion, you know, as long as that grading permit clearly makes a record of that. There is no risk of construction in this site location, which would be the normal concern for uncompacted fill in another location. And I would say that the standard should be upheld, which is a 2:1 standard for cut slopes, or pardon me, for fill slopes in a situation like any other. So it should abide by the county grading ordinance of 2:1 slopes.
Following up on that question, I know that there's like the minor fill policy that requires uncompacted fill areas be recorded. I'm wondering if that is something that's being required here? Should the property be, change hands at some point, that those areas of uncompacted fill be recorded?
I would have to consult with our director in building. The uncompacted fill policy is limited to 500 cubic yards, and so it wouldn't apply to a large stockpile of this type. But I think it makes good sense that there be some record or recording on the parcel indicating the extent of the fill.
Okay, great. And then I was just wondering if a SWIP was being required for the areas of disturbance being over an acre?
I would assume so, because it's over an acre of disturbance.
Okay, great, that's all I had.
Mr. McEntire.
Oh, sorry, I thought I was...
So first of all, whoops. First of all, I misidentified, so Mr. North, I apologize to you. You were a tremendous guide for the couple hours we were together. I'm interested in that it says between 20,000 and 50,000 cubic yards, which is a lot of material. And so if it was a dry year, would the association, dry years, would the association be pulling out the maximum of 50,000?
No, it is going to be evaluated on a case-by-case basis. Typically, in a two, three-year cycle, we'll have anywhere from 20,000 to 30,000 yards of sediment removal. The 50,000 has only occurred one time. The 50,000 has only occurred one time, and that was shortly after the 97 floods, if you recall those, when Sacramento flooded. And we had a large amount of sediments come into the lake. And so, yes, we're just going by history over the last 40 years. The average has been in that 30,000 cubic yard number. And yeah, it's been as little as the low 20s, but typically, it's been in that 30,000 cubic yard range.
So my second one, I'm not sure it's a question, but a point, is that Circle has been the overriding good neighbor, I'll say, for the Yuba River and Deer Creek watershed for years. And I'm just, I'm impressed that Circle hasn't made any comments, and I know they were involved in sort of getting this started. And so it's commendable to you and the association that they're not a voice today of dissent. And so congratulations to you on that.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Commissioner McIntyre. Yeah, we have worked well, and we've had several meetings with Circle and SSI and Fish and Wildlife to circumvent a lot of these mitigation, excuse me, mitigation measures that have been implemented. As well as, the drawdown plan was one of the biggest things, as Marie depicted in that one chart, where we used to just crank open the valve and let it rip, as you can see here. That was upwards of 400 CFS, cubic feet per second. And now we've worked with Circle and Fish and Wildlife. And we came up with the, it's actually a 40 CFS number that will be the maximum flow rate out, and then we'll also ramp up to that and then ramp back down to that to minimize the impact and minimize the potential for salmon to feel like, oh...
That's the way to go.
Yeah, we've got a good stream coming down here, let's swim up here. We're eliminating that.
Thank you. And finally, on my tour and all, Marie, I just want to let you know, I met a number of people, and one of the overriding concepts was how great you were to work with. So I want to say thank you on behalf of the commission and the county residents of your fine work on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Millman?
So back to the disposal area, is this the two parcels? Is that where the disposal has been taking place for the last 40 years? Like, that's where all of the disposal is?
I believe that it's at least since the 90s, but I will defer to Kevin Nelson.
Yes, Commissioner Millman, yes, this has been a site, just to give you a little bit more history on that. It was previously owned by Ron Hollub back in the 80s and 90s. The association started working with him in the early 90s to dispose of the sediment at that site. We had, I think, I believe the first grading permit was 93 or 94. And as I showed some of the other commissioners, some of the first disposal sites were in that lower section in the early and mid 90s. And then, over the years, we kept backfilling over it. And we've probably, yeah, we have well over 100,000 yards of material that were brought in through the 90s and 2000s. And we've continued to obviously put our erosion control measures in place. And a lot of the areas have since, it's even hard to tell that sediment was brought in there, because it's revegetated itself with natural vegetation and grown over. And yeah, we'll be continuing to utilize that.
What are the erosion control that you have in place?
Typically, we'll do silt fencing around any of the areas that are being, sediment being brought into. We'll also be using fiber rolls. We also, in the phase, if I can describe it as kind of a deep trench moat, we'll dig around the areas, because the material coming out of the lake is still quite saturated. So that allows the water to settle out and have a place to be contained without going downstream into Wildwood Creek or any other watercourses nearby. And then, following up, we'll do a combination of straw and seed and hydroseed to stabilize the material once we're completed with that particular year's operation.
Is it suitable for compacted fill later? Like, do you ever take any of this back off of here?
We haven't taken any off of the site typically. It is interesting, I think I was sharing with Commissioner Garst out there, that some of this material has been sitting there for quite some time, and it actually does compact quite hard. And, you know, we're, could see some compaction numbers in the low 90s typically that would be suitable. But to address Commissioner Garst's question regards of some kind of deed restriction or something, noting the uncompacted fill in the future, should the association ever decide to sell the property, that obviously would have to be disclosed.
So, since the early 90s, and then there's a plan for another 15 years, just, I'm having a hard, obviously, I didn't visit it, I'm having a hard time imagining, like, it just seems like you're creating a hill over there? And then what, right? Like, what's the, what's the long-term plan if you're not kind of using it as fill other places?
Well, to be quite frank, it's a piece of property that I've studied quite a bit and provided for the association, long-term grading designs for the site as well, which I actually did before they purchased the property in 2018. And actually showed that we can dispose of roughly around 500,000 cubic yards out there in addition to what's currently there. And so what, this plan is just the beginning. If we could get a 40- to 50-year permit for this, we would request it, but unfortunately, a 15-year is the maximum. So what this allows us with, you know, if you figure somewhere around 30,000 cubic yards on average every three to four years, this site would potentially allow the association to utilize this parcel for another 40 to 50 years for this sediment removal and maintenance of the lake. This is just kind of the first 15-year step, if you will, for that. Unfortunately, and this will allow us to do three to five operations of the sediment removal over the next 15 years. And we'll be coming back to the, maybe some of you will still be here on the planning commission, but coming back to the county to update these permits again for another 15 years and potentially another time after that. So, and to answer your question regarding the, bringing that up, basically, from the easterly portion of Bosa Road, and we're going to be continuing to fill up that area to the point where we're just below the upper area or the westerly area there, should have brought a laser beam, but the, you know, the area to the left there, Marie, keep going to the left, yeah, that area there is also area that has been sediment deposits. And so we'll bring the area to the right, continuing to bring that up to meet just below that. And that volume we can bring up, that's about, I believe, if I remember right, about 25 to 30 feet vertically, just kind of continuing up that hill over the next 40 to 50 years. So this is definitely a long-term site and a long-term project. Hopefully, that answers your questions.
Yeah, it does, thank you. So then, the drawdown of the water, I understood that all of the water in the lake comes out?
No, just they're looking for a 10- to 12-foot drawdown to make sure that they're getting at the areas that are closest to the incoming streams. So if we look at the site plan here, the main source of sediment, to my understanding, is coming through here. This is a more shallow part of the lake, as well as here, and so they're just looking to access these portions. So these portions will, in large part, still have water in them, to my understanding.
Yeah. And if I could add, do that, just to add to that, yeah, it is only a 10- to 12-foot drawdown. The lake at the center point, the maximum depth is around 40 to 45 feet. So there's still a, that center portion that isn't highlighted still has water in it. And this also allows all the lakefront owners to do shoreline work and cleanup work along their docks and seawalls and just general maintenance along their lake frontage as well.
And what time of year does this happen?
We start the drawdown in late September and start the sediment removal process about the 1st of November. We work basically through November and then wrap things up the 1st of December and allow the lake to fill back up naturally. And sometimes that takes a few months. It's, when we've had less rain, sometimes our lake doesn't fill up. It's been as late as February, maybe even into March.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. Marie, if we could look at the slide with the three comments?
The agency comments that were received on SEQA?
Yes.
Yes.
So, am I to understand that through the notice period, these were the only three comments received on this project? And they were all from, and they were from these three agencies with these noted concerns, and staff has addressed them all to the agencies to their satisfaction?
Correct. We did not necessarily receive affirmative emails in response to, from each of the agencies, but we did provide each of them with redlined comments and a formal response via email. And haven't heard since, so we're assuming no news is good news. We did during, more during the public noticing period, not so much for SEQA, but in ahead of this meeting, had a couple calls and a couple emails from neighbors, mostly just asking questions about how the sediment was going to be graded, just some basic concerns about erosion and things like that, that were all addressed.
Thank you. And I too want to thank my good friends out there at Lake Wildwood for the tour, and it was, it was kind of enlightening, especially the deposit site. I think, from being down there on the ground, it gives you a much better perspective than looking at the map. It's almost in a kind of recessed bowl area, so we're really not in, you know, from what I saw, we're really not building a mound, and we're kind of bringing the terrain up to level to its surroundings. So I really don't have many concerns there. Anyway, that's it for me, so thanks, everyone. Good presentation. Anything else from the commissioners?
I just had one comment that really helped me understand much of this, is I wanted to know, when I was on the tour, and I think it'll help the rest of the commissioners, is why there isn't dredging towards the dam that this sediment, you know, it just builds up there, and it would seem, it would seem just natural that the sediment was building up on the bottom of the lake and towards where the dam was. And so if you could fill everyone in regarding, fill everyone in regarding that, I think it really helped understand about the dredging proposed.
Yeah, fortunately or unfortunately, yeah, our major flow into the lake is from Deer Creek. Our secondary largest influx of water is from Wildwood Creek, and then we have several other smaller tributary areas. But that's where the sediment deposits are the greatest, is where the water comes in the most. And most of the sediments, as they come into, into the lake, because as soon as they come in with a higher velocity, particularly from Deer Creek, they hit the body of water and then just slow down. And obviously, when water slows down, what happens? The sediments sink. So we have such a large area, particularly just off Hideaway Park there, that allow those sediments to sink out, and they settle down right in that area of the influence of Deer Creek there.
So actually dredging towards the dam or in the middle of the lake isn't, isn't anything that you foresee?
Right now and over the last 40 years, we haven't seen a whole lot of that. And I might defer back to Terry a little bit. We haven't, in your experience, haven't seen anything else to that, yeah. Yeah, we just haven't seen a whole lot of sediment deposits in that dam area. And near the dam, the dam is shallow enough, at the lakeside of the dam is only about five or six feet there. So that does get exposed, and we are able to see that and inspect that, and there's just not a whole lot of sediments there.
Great, thanks.
Thanks, everyone. Anything else from anyone? Are we about ready to entertain a motion?
It's yours, Mike, if you'd like to do it.
I'll let you do it, Terry.
Okay, so now I look, I look for Marie to help me out here, because if I have to read all of this, Marie, we'll be here longer than the public hearing. So, so in terms of the actual action item on this, Marie, how would you, how would you suggest I, I do this compared to reading three pages out loud? Is there any shorter way? Should I just make right here on the screen before us? Is that what you'd like me to say?
Yes, please.
Are each of these an actionable item, or would you like, can I group them all together?
Each is a separate item, there's five items here.
Okay, so I'll move after reviewing and considering the proposed mitigated negative declaration, including as attachment two, EIS 23-006, zero, three sixes, three zeros and a six, adopt the proposed mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program pursuant to section 15074 and 15097 of the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines, and make findings A through D.
I second the motion.
We have a motion in a second. Shelley, if you'll call the vote, please.
Commissioner McIntyre?
Aye.
Commissioner Garst?
Aye.
Commissioner Millman?
Yes.
And Chair Mastodonado?
Yes, the motion carries.
Okay, on the second motion, I'd like to approve the management plan included as attachment eight, MGT 23-0039, subject to the attached mitigation measures and conditions of approval, and make findings A and B pursuant to section L-24 dot 3 dot 3B of the Nevada County zoning code, in that encroachment into the non-disturbance buffer of watercourses, wetlands, and riparian areas is necessary in order to provide reasonable development of the land.
I second the motion.
We have a motion in a second. Shelley, if you'll call the vote, please.
Commissioner McIntyre?
Aye.
Commissioner Garst?
Yes.
Commissioner Millman?
Yes.
And Chair Mastodonado?
Yes.
Thirdly, to approve the management plan included as attachment nine, MGT 23-0040, subject to the attached mitigation measures and conditions of approval, and make findings A and B pursuant to section L-24 dot 3 dot 3 dot B of the Nevada County zoning code, in that impacts to trees are necessary in order to provide reasonable development of the land.
I second the motion.
Is thirdly a word?
Thirdly, yes, it is.
We have a motion in a second. Shelley, if you'll call the vote, please.
Commissioner McAteer?
Aye.
Commissioner Garst?
Yes.
Commissioner Millman?
Yes.
And Chair Mastodonado?
Yes.
And number four, approve-
Motion carries.
Oh, thank you. Number four, approve the management plan included as attachment nine, MGT 24-0002, subject to the attached mitigation measures and conditions of approval, and make findings A and B pursuant to section L-24 dot 3 dot 3 dot B of the Nevada County zoning code, in that impacts to rare, threatened, and endangered species and their habitat are necessary in order to provide reasonable development of the land.
I second the motion.
We have a motion in a second. Shelley, if you'll call the vote, please.
Commissioner McAteer?
Aye.
Commissioner Garst?
Yes.
Commissioner Millman?
Yes.
And Chair Mastodonado?
Yes, the motion carries.
And fifth, and finally, approve the use permit, CUP 23-0011, subject to the conditions shown in attachment one, or as may be modified at the public hearing, and making the following findings pursuant to LUDC, Chapter 12 Flood Plane Management Regulations, and Section L-25 dot 6 dot G of zoning regulations.
I second the motion.
We have a motion in a second. Shelley, if you'll call the vote, please.
Commissioner McAteer?
Aye.
Commissioner Garst?
Yes.
Commissioner Millman?
Yes.
And Chair Mastodonado?
Yes, the motion carries.
Good job, folks.
Thank you, Commissioners.
And good luck.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Just for the record, there's a 10-day appeal period on that action. Yeah, thanks, Tyler. There is a 10-day appeal period on this project, so keep that in mind. Thanks, guys. Okay, moving on, we have another public hearing project from Lake Wildwood. And this one belongs to Vanessa. And we will hear from Vanessa first.
Good afternoon, planning commissioners. I'm going to settle in really quickly and Vanessa Franken. I'm a senior planner within the Nevada County Planning Department. I get my project documents pulled up for you all. am also the project manager for this proposal that we have here before you all today. I am excited to be presenting to you all for the first time. If I inadvertently fumble the technology, feel free to either laugh or take pity on me. To start, I wanted to introduce the project we have here today. It's the Lake Wildwood Public Works Maintenance Facility, which is considered a replacement and minor expansion of the existing facility that is currently on-site at Lake Wildwood. As we get into it, I wanted to clarify that there are three entitlements today that I will be speaking to. One is the conditional use permit that is actually required for the replacement and expansion of the facility itself. Secondly, we have an oak tree management plan for the proposed removal of 35 oak trees. And we also have the initial study mitigated negative declaration, which does a thorough analysis on potential project impacts, as required by California Environmental Quality Act SEQA laws. First, I wanted us all to get acquainted with the project location. As we can see here, we have a landmark holiday market to the west side of Pheasant Valley Road. Pheasant Valley Road intersection on the east side actually leans up to the main entrance of Lake Wildwood itself. Here, we have the project parcel highlighted in red for reference. Moving into surrounding land uses, again, we have the project area here outlined in red, and we have a couple of different zoning designations prepared before y'all with some acronyms. I wanted to clarify that the brighter yellow is zoned single-family residential, or R1 for short. We can see that the project parcel falls within this zone. This zone is actually considered a community region per our general plan. It's actually within the general plan that the PRC designation for this site, which actually encompasses all of this community region, which is PRC, Planned Residential Community, allows for support, residential supports of facilities. So this, Lake Wildwood is an HOA. The support facility is in turn to support their private public works maintenance team. External of this community region is considered a rural region by our general plan. External of the Lake Wildwood community area, we have the commercial zone of the holiday market that we saw on the previous slide. And then we also have agricultural residential properties to the west and south. I wanted to take a moment here to notate a couple of examples of planned communities. So Lake Wildwood, I had mentioned, is one. Other examples are Alta Sierra and Lake of the Pines. Chapter one, land use of the general plan, indicates that the PRC general plan designation is in support of residential facilities, which I had mentioned earlier. Other additional policies indicated by the general plan, chapter one, land use, include policies 1.1.1 and 1.1.2, which are further upheld by this project. So those policies I just mentioned do call out a maintenance for respect of district boundaries. This project continuing in its same place does exactly that. So the maintenance facility being proposed and replaced in the same spot versus external of the district that it falls within is an applicable general plan policy that is being supported. Taking a closer look at the project site here, as we can see, the project parcel is currently developed with several uses. One is the private Lake Wildwood golf course. We also have the existing Oaks Clubhouse in the center of the property as well. And then we also have the existing public works maintenance facility yard. I wanted to call out that exact yard right here. Moving in for a closer look, we have the project area, which I will be referring to as in future slides, highlighted for us all. We have Cotton Tail Way running north to south, providing direct access into the project site directly west of Cotton Tail Way. All roads within Lake Wildwood are privately maintained by the association. To the east side of Cotton Tail Way, we have multiple entrances into the existing Oaks Clubhouse parking lot. Here is a further breakdown of the project area. As we can see, there's several colors going on, and I'll break it down for you all, because I will be referencing these components moving forward in the presentation. I wanted to call out that this project area is 2.5 acres in size, and it is also the same size that is proposed with amount of disturbance going into the project. No export fill is anticipated to leave the site. All fill that will be resultant of grading will be kept on-site. And to break down these several components before you all, beginning from the very far right, within the project area is a pink outline encompassing the existing primary parking lot and the existing maintenance facility. Directly left is another pink outline highlighting the industrial outdoor yard. As you can see, within this area, there are existing bulk bins near the very south of this area. The third component I wanted to offer, highlighted in yellow, are the existing landscape berms on the property. I will be talking about these more throughout my presentation. Now that we're acquainted with the site, I wanted to move into what is exactly existing on-site. As we can see here, this is an existing face of the public works maintenance facility building. The existing facility was permitted initially via use permit, conditional use permit, and a subsequent building permit in the 1970s. The existing public works facility building can be considered headquarters for the Lake Wildwood Public Works team. The team is currently 20 individuals that all report to this facility as headquarters before dispatching out to task, to do, to do and perform tasks exterior of the project area and throughout the Lake Wildwood community. Examples of tasks include things like plumbing, electrical work, private road maintenance that often requires large vehicles, and also things such as sign repair, or any other type of golf course maintenance task and needs as well. Another view of the existing site here, a different angle of that same existing building, you can see the industrial bay doors directly to the left with a quick view of some of the equipment that's used by the public works maintenance team. You can kind of tell here that the building has definitely seen some weather and is in need of repair and a modernization at that. Directly to the right, we have an image of the primary parking lot. As you can see, there are numerous fleet vehicles parked here. Not a lot of landscaping going on, several trees surrounding the site as well. Moving into different views, specifically interior of the outdoor yard, as you can see here to the left, we have that most southern landscape berm that was shown in a prior slide, with the existing bins as well. Directly to the right is the northern, or excuse me, it's the same landscape berm, but with a different angle of view for clearer understanding of what those bulk bins look like. These bulk bins typically hold things such as gravel, sand, and bark, all of which are used in different quantities around the site to respond to any tasks that might be at the golf course or any other private landscape areas that the facility maintains. I did want to point out that in the left photo, you can kind of see an example of overhanging oak canopy. A portion of oak tree canopy has been seen, deemed as hazardous per pre-qualified Nevada County biologist, which is touched further on the management plan that I'll be discussing. Now that we know what is existing on stop, now that we know what is existing on-site, I wanted to talk shop on what's actually being proposed. Today, we have a proposal of three new buildings and associated improvements. To, to kick off, the three buildings include a replacement 10,000-some square foot primary maintenance building. We also have a enclosed equipment storage building as well at roughly 65-some thousand square feet. And in the outdoor yard, we also have the outdoor covered storage building as well. I did want to note that this outdoor covered storage building is partially enclosed and is really a industrial-sized carport to harbor large-sized vehicles from weather and elements. In addition to the proposed buildings, we have associated improvements as well. As I touched on earlier, we have the oak tree removal via management plan proposing to remove a total of 53 trees, 35 specifically of which are to be oak trees to be removed. Within the outdoor yard, we also have a 2,000-some square foot vehicle wash, fueling, and fertilizer system, which I will touch on in future slides. And associated grading of the site will also be proposed, and gravelling of the outdoor yard, demolition of the actual existing facility itself, and replacement of repaving for internal roads of the facility and the parking lot itself. Also proposed as an associated improvement will be the replacement of the outdoor yard bulk bins, covers, new lighting, and landscape surrounding the perimeter of the buildings. Moving into the enlarged site plan, I wanted to break down a little bit of exactly what I just mentioned here. To the right, very right of the slide, we have the proposed 10,000-some square foot primary maintenance building. Directly left of this is the some 6,000-square-foot enclosed storage building. Directly in the middle of the outdoor yard, we have the vehicle wash and fertilizing system. And directly left of this structure, the very far left of your slide, is going to be the outdoor covered storage area. In this slide, you can see the proposed replacement parking, or excuse me, replaced bulk bin located to the south of the project area perimeter. And directly to the north of the outdoor yard, we have proposed fleet parking vehicle, fleet vehicle parking, which will take all of those fleet vehicles we saw against Cotton Tail Way and move them into the outdoor yard away from public view. I wanted to call out here the green arrows you see on the slide before you. These arrows are intended to indicate thoroughfare of both equipment, machinery, and vehicles and circulation of typical tasks that staff have on-site. As you can see, there are some canopy areas within this area and, and other slides that were mentioned that prohibit and pose as hazardous concerns, not only for the construction team, but also for the Lake Wildwood team as well, when they go to dispatch out for those tasks that they have to do leaving the site. Also here, you can see the primary parking lot that is proposed directly west of Cotton Tail Way. Configurations are to be changed and repaved and surrounded with new landscape for the site. As part of best, best management practices conditioned and outlined in the mitigation measures associated with the initial study, there will be appropriate conditions for dust control plans, traffic control plans. There will also be the requirement for the one acre or more of grading. And in addition to this, in addition to this, typical other, sorry, excuse me, I just need one moment. In addition to this, typical landscaping requirements will apply. I wanted to introduce here another version of the enlarged site plan, giving a clearer look of what actually is going on within those buildings and improvements we all touched on. Beginning from right again, we have the proposed primary maintenance building, which shows how exactly this building will be used. The primary maintenance building is exactly that. It's a primary building to be used by the Lake Wildwood team. It's broken down into several square footages. We have offices. We have communal employee space. We have storage. And we also have deliberate areas for workshops to be associated with the Lake Wildwood Public Works Maintenance Team's responsibilities. These workshops include a woodshop, a metal shop, and a non-retail golf shop. Directly left of this proposed building is the enclosed equipment storage, which is very much so used for exactly that, enclosing storage with the, or enclosing equipment within this building. Hopping into the outdoor storage yard, as mentioned earlier, it's prepared, proposed to be graded and re-gravelled. We have a clearer view of the footprint of the vehicle wash and feeling station. This is essentially equipment placed on a concrete pad with an industrial carport overhead. Directly south of this are the, a clearer view of what those bulk bins are going to be looking like. And directly left of the proposed vehicle wash and feeling station is the covered storage, which I had mentioned earlier, really is an industrial-sized carport intended to house larger equipment that needs to be weathered from the, or needs to be protected from the weather and elements. In this slide, I also wanted to call out to the very southeast of your slide, excuse me. Okay, there we go. I also wanted to call out here the east side of the building elevation and how it faces towards the existing Oaks Clubhouse parking lot. As we saw in previous slides, the Oaks House Clubhouse and parking is existing, with the replacement of the facility broken down into several components and focusing primarily on the maintenance building, abutting the eastern side, western side of the parking lot. We can see here that there's a bit of distance, and I wanted to spotlight this a little bit before moving into the actual aesthetics of the proposed buildings themselves. So here, there are about 40 to 80 feet of distance- this building. Hopping into the outdoor storage yard, as mentioned earlier, it's prepared, proposed to be graded and re-gravelled. We have a clearer view of the footprint of the vehicle wash and fueling station. This is essentially equipment placed on a concrete pad with an industrial carport overhead. Directly south of this are the, a clearer view of what those bulk bins are going to be looking like. And directly left of the proposed vehicle wash and fueling station is the covered storage, which I had mentioned earlier really is an industrial-sized carport intended to house larger equipment that needs to be weathered from the, or needs to be protected from the weather and elements. In this slide, I also wanted to call out to the very southeast of your slide. Excuse me. Okay, there we go. I also wanted to call out here the east side of the building elevation and how it faces towards the existing Oaks Clubhouse parking lot. As we saw in previous slides, the Oaks House Clubhouse and parking is existing with the replacement of the facility broken down into several components and focusing primarily on the maintenance building, abutting the eastern side, western side of the parking lot. We can see here that there's a bit of distance, and I wanted to spotlight this a little bit before moving into the actual aesthetics of the proposed buildings themselves. So here, there are about 40 to 80 feet of distance in between the parking lot and the building, and I will be touching on this a little bit more specifically in future slides. Moving into the proposed tree removal, we saw in previous slides that there is some overhanging canopy hanging over main thoroughfare roads of circulation for the project. What we have here before you all is a proposed tree removal plan. The tree removal associated with the management plan includes a total of 53 trees, 35 which are to be oak trees. The proposed removal is segregated into three areas. We have the northern, southern, and western grove. There's about 23 trees proposed to be removed in the northern grove. There's about six trees proposed for removal in the southern grove, and there is about one oak tree to be removed in the western grove. As part of mitigation for the project, a Nevada County pre-qualified biologist did prepare a management plan and biological report on the proposed tree removal and provided several mitigation measures that have been incorporated into the mitigation monitoring Several of these mitigations are as follows. One, there's going to be a nesting survey prepared prior to construction. Nesting season of endangered and potentially sensitive birds were outlined to be from the months of March through August, which is when construction is anticipated. Prior to any construction onsite, it is a requirement that a survey is done to see if any of these sensitive species are either nesting or hatched. If these are nest, if these species are either nesting or hatched, construction is required to halt prior, temporarily I should say, and can resume once all of the potentially sensitive birds are free of the site. I did want to note that the biologist did say that the potential for the birds and other sensitive species to be located onsite is low due to the existing nature of the industrial site itself. There's just a lot of activity going on, and there's not much anticipation for birds and other species of sensitive background to be onsite. Additional measures aside from the survey required prior to construction also include the financial compensation, which was the selected preferred measure to make up for tree demolition. The requirement for financial compensation is a two-to-one ratio. There's approximately .40 of an acre of trees being removed associated with this project. A .80 of an acre in size credit will be purchased and paid to the Bear Uba Land Trust. The Bear Uba Land Trust will take these funds and do planting off-site in mitigation of I also wanted to offer here that the selected financial measure was seen as appropriate due to the proximity and nature of the golf course nearby. To avoid any impact to golfers and recreational users of the golf course, the preferred selected financial measure was seen as fit in this situation. Moving into parking standards and site development standards as well, first starting with parking, the code requirements dictate parking stalls for every 200 square feet of office space. We saw the footprints of the proposed buildings in prior slides. Calculations of those proposed floor plans calced out to 25 parking stalls being required in total. Here, we can see the primary parking lot that is proposed. Here is a total of 16 stalls, one of which is proposed to be ADA. The parking lot configurations meet intent of the Western Nevada Guideline intentions in that the parking that is proposed is not abutting directly against Cotton Tail Way, and it's actually recessed a fair amount away from Cotton Tail Way and away from public Here we have a continued slide of parking. The proposed nine stalls remaining of the 25 are proposed here and located along the northern outdoor yard and is to be screened by landscape berms. The parking requirements are condition per item 8A of the, excuse me, A8 of the recommended conditions approval before you all. A view of the existing landscape berm adjacent to the proposed fleet parking is seen here directly to the right. A site inspection was conducted. Existing landscape berms surrounding the outdoor yard were seen as suitable existing screening measures due to size, width, and height. Landscape berms will be reinforced with fill from project grading. The Northern Sierra Air Quality Management District has conditioned landscape berms to be seated, and typical dust control measures will apply throughout the construction as well. Due to the project parcel handling and storing hazardous materials and chemicals, the site, and the site existing since the 70s, with the existing use and associated handlings, the project has been conditioned per DTSC, which stands for the Department of Toxicity and Substance Control, to have appropriate sampling done on soil prior to the reinforcement of that dirt being deposited into these landscape berms. I wanted to mention that the site is currently regulated by the Nevada County Department of Environmental Health for COOPA, which stands for the Certified Unified Program Agency, and also for compliance and permits with SPC, C, which stands for the Spill, Prevention, Control, and Countermeasure Plans. Our environmental health department is here in the crowd and may be available for any questions following my presentation. Due to the nature of the facility, hazardous materials such as motor oil, fertilizer, propane, antifreeze in large quantities are stored onsite. I just wanted to mention a couple examples of what these chemical materials are considered. More information on soil sampling and conditions will be touched on in the future slides that I will be touching on soon. I also wanted to mention here that associated HVAC equipment inside of the buildings and overall appropriate screening measures have been provided in compliance with applicable land use and development code criteria. Moving into landscaping, Section 4.2.7 regulates standards for new landscape. A use permit is actually the trigger for when new landscape standards are to be adhered to. As we saw in prior photos, the existing parking lot has little to no landscape with the exception of some pine, oak, and what can be considered scrub trees. The proposed landscape plan for the project paid additional attention to visual layering and screening of the project frontage with respect to the Western Nevada County Design Guidelines. Proposed plans are seen to the left, and also the proposed landscape plan is in the right image. I wanted to take a moment right here to kind of spotlight exactly where landscape is prepared. A lot of emphasis on new landscape is within the parking area as required by code, and there's also a great emphasis on trees being proposed along the eastern side of this primary maintenance building. Landscape was designed to keep as much existing trees and native vegetation as possible. Use of drought tolerant and native plants were sought out when possible as well. Landscape, as you can see here, includes a mix of shrubs, ground cover, and trees, and to provide adequate parking lot shading, screening, and visual peel as well. All landscape will be required to be reviewed per building permit application. There are threaded recommended conditions of approval to further regulate landscape via building permit. All new landscape is also required to follow the MWLO compliance. MWLO stands for the Model Water Landscape Ordinance. That is a state law. In addition to landscape, lighting is also required and proposed for the project. All lighting is regulated by Section 4.2 D7 Lighting. Proposed lighting meets required standards for being fully shielded and directed downwards. Conditions of approval further enforce these requirements. New lighting will replace any non-compliant lights such as floodlights and will be energy-efficient. Solar requirements for the project are regulated by the California Building Code. Solar is required if energy consumption is to surpass 4 kilowatts, which I believe this project will surpass. The provided lighting plan shows lighting wattage within the project area. Plans do indicate that there is no light trespass outside of the project area off-site or into nearby residential lots. I do want to mention here that the closest residential lot adjacent to the project area is about 80 feet north of the site, and it has been existing there since the subdivision was created. Each side of the project is a, or excuse me, the east side of the project is a developed parking lot with existing lighting of its own. From the northwest and south of the outdoor yard, there are landscape berms and over 100 feet of distance from other subdivision lots as well. There are two 15-foot light, there are two 15-foot tall poles proposed within the primary parking lot. There are also nine wall-mounted lights proposed along the primary maintenance building, and two wall mounts are proposed along the enclosed, enclosed equipment storage front as well. Six ceiling lights are proposed within the outdoor storage structure seen to the very far west of the outdoor park, outdoor industrial yard. As I mentioned earlier, it's essentially a large industrial covering. These ceiling fixtures will be attached to that covering. There are also a total of two ceiling lights proposed under the replacement bulk bins as well. A single double headlight is proposed under the covering for the vehicle wash and fueling station. Lighting was designed minimally and meets outlined code requirements. Lighting is further conditioned by conditions of approval, A7, on page three of the recommended condition approval list that y'all have before you. Overall, the project meets applicable site development standards of the Nevada County Land Use Code as well as applicable community design standards as well. The project as proposed is consistent with both Nevada County planning and the Nevada County general plan. Quickly touching on the footprint of the building itself, here we have the primary maintenance building that I've done some talking on in previous slides. This is just a better look of the actual floor plan configurations that we touched on. We have the main entrance building to the very far right of this, and office space, lobbies, storage, and additional workshops shown as well. Moving into the elevations for the actual primary maintenance building itself, all new buildings are designed to blend with the existing structures and are in compliance with the Western Nevada, Western Nevada County Design Guidelines. Original project plans were reviewed and resulted with staff recommendations for additional design details. These comments were absorbed by the applicant team and incorporated into the project plan seen here and in the next few slides. Some of the compliance standards met include proposed color selection, which is a stone and slate gray in our neutral colors found in the area, exterior finishes of the building, which propose finished metal materials suited for the industrial building. The architectural design also incorporates details that add visual interest such as requested windows, roof pitch layerings, and a prominent main entrance, all intended as criteria by the Western Nevada, Western Nevada County Design Guidelines. Images of the primary buildings here showcase exactly this. There are additional proposed conditions of approval, A6, 7, and 9, that further regulate compliance with the approved design of the building. Once again, we have the elevations of the primary maintenance building, west, north, and southern elevation faces. At the very top of this slide is that east elevation I called attention to in prior slides that abuts the existing Oaks Clubhouse. It may seem somewhat flat and unarticulated. However, I did want to call out the, that some of the additional design criteria that staff had recommended were incorporated into this building, and it's as seen here. Excuse me. Due to the nature and industrial use of the site, staff did see that the proposed architectural renderings and overall design were compliant with the Western Nevada Guidelines. Moving into the enlarged site plan one more time, having spoke on the eastern side of the building, we can see here a little bit of the distance that I touched on earlier. And directly to the right of the enlarged site plan, we have a view from the existing Oaks Clubhouse parking lot, looking directly into the east-facing proposed side of the new primary maintenance building. Quickly touching on footprints of the two other proposed buildings, just to recap, the two other buildings include the enclosed storage building directly left of the primary, and in the outdoors, outdoor industrial yard, we have the covered storage building as well. Here are some architectural renderings of the same buildings. We have the enclosed storage building to the left, and to the right, we have the outdoor storage building, which is partially enclosed as I have mentioned earlier. The new buildings do match design criteria outlined by Western Nevada Design Guidelines. The outdoor storage building is interior of the outdoor yard as mentioned and is going to be screened by landscape berms. The enclosed storage building has natural screening due to the location being interior of the site and orientation of the building itself. There are proposed conditions of approval, A6 through 7 and 9, that also further regulate compliance with the design guidelines as well. What we have here is a rendering of the site, pre-revision as I had mentioned earlier. This image here is shared to provide a 3D visual of the facility. With respect to the land use development code, the facility meets all applicable site development standards listed within this ordinance. No signage is proposed for the facility at this time. In addition, the project is consistent with general plan policies mentioned throughout my report. The, a further breakdown of these policies are described in the project staff report Moving into the environmental review, as I mentioned earlier, an initial study mitigated negative declaration was prepared in a result of project analysis. Due to the discretionary nature of the use permit application and the project square footage exceeding 10,000 square feet, and also the site involving hazardous chemicals, this project could not be exempt from CEQA. And so this initial study was prepared to describe potential impacts of this proposal. Elements analyzed for impacts include aesthetics, air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, and hazardous materials, to name a few, out of the 21 total elements. Based on application review and compliance with local and regulatory laws, all identified areas of potential impact have been mitigated to below levels of significance. The planning department prepared a draft initial study with, for the proposed project with the posting period for public comment, for public comment and review for 30 days, specifically March 2nd through April 2nd. AB 52 consultation was also extended in August of last year. No requests for consultation were received. In response to the comment period, two public agencies did provide comments. I did want to highlight that no opposition from these agencies were received. Instead, the aforementioned State Department of Toxicity and Substance Control, DTSC, responded with requirements for sampling of dirt prior to use in reinforcement of those landscape berms. Department of DTSC also outlined appropriate protocols for testing and demolition of the existing building to appropriately screen for asbestos. An offer was also extended from DTSC to the Nevada County Environmental Health Department to join the voluntary agreement program. This offer would subject our environmental health department as the lead for large-scale hazardous cleanups or responses to large spills. This voluntary offer was not entered due to limited quantity of staff. For reference, there is soon to be one hazmat environmental health member on our team. A memorandum notating, excuse me, the Northern Sierra Air Quality Management District is the second public comment agency to provide a response in regard to this initial study being circulated. The Northern Sierra Air Quality Management District really provided clarification language for the mitigation measures that were already outlined in the initial study. A memorandum has been shared, both via email and as hard copies to you all, notating the exact revision language that was provided and has been incorporated into the conditions of approval and will also be included in the findings for you all to adopt if this project is selected to be approved. With the presentation coming to an end, staff would like to respectfully recommend these actions to the commission to adopt in consideration of project approval. I did want to note that the exact I did want to note that the exact project findings can be referenced as outlined on pages 18 through 20 on the staff report dated April 11th of this year. I also did want to share that there is a brief PowerPoint from the project applicant team to be shared when commissioners are ready for viewing. At this time, I would like to thank you all very much for your consideration and time, and I also did want to note that, in combination with the project applicant staff, that appropriate Nevada County staff are here as well, including our environmental health department, for any questions that may be a result of this presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Vanessa. Good job. So, we are prepared to hear from the applicant. Is that correct? Sure, come on up.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Martin Wood with SEO, Planning and Engineering, and I'm here today with Pete Rosato, LDA Architects, and additionally, Tim Johnson, Project Manager from Lake Wildwood Association, and a lot of other Lake Wildwood individuals here that we can field questions at the end of this. We do have a short presentation. We'll try not to be duplicative. We appreciate Vanessa's very thorough explanation of what's proposed today, and we hope to just add and highlight a few points, and then we'll be available for questions. Okay, so we can go to the next slide. So again, I think she went over pretty well, the project site. We're right adjacent to the existing clubhouse. One thing I just want to highlight on this particular project, and if you've been out there, I think you can appreciate, what's, what's nice about this particular site is how it's kind of tucked into the terrain. It's, it's quite a bit lower in grade elevation below the existing clubhouse, kind of created that natural site obscuring, and it has some other elements that I'll show in other slides about screening the site from the existing neighborhood and across the golf course. Next slide. So again, just an overall, I just want to show that to the south and the west, we have the golf course as kind of a natural buffer, and then to the north, we do have some neighbors that are somewhat close, and we, we paid close attention to some of the detail elements that we'll talk about, and being sensitive to those adjacent owners. Next slide. So again, why we're here today, you know, this is a really important facility for the Lake Wildwood Association in being effective to, you know, the whole Lake Wildwood area. So this is kind of a modernization project, and creating a really good work environment and making them exceptionally effective in the future to basically keep a high level of service for the greater Lake Wildwood area. I won't go and, I think we kind of know from Vanessa's presentation of where the, the various areas are. Let's go to next slide. Or previous, I think, right there. So just briefly, want to talk about access. Again, access to the north off of the main road, that's our primary access. We're going to have some roll-type gates, just to prevent, you know, for vehicle security into the site. Stormwater, again, we're meeting county requirements, we're retaining at multiple basins for treating water to, post-project being equal to pre-project flows. And utilities, one advantage to this site, you know, by demoing the existing buildings, we have this opportunity of undergrounding a significant amount of overhead power lines that are there. So from aesthetic perspective and reliability, it's going to be superior. And some other things, just to comment, that I think are always important in projects like this, is creating a really good employment atmosphere. These buildings are equipped with, you know, state-of-the-art locker rooms, there's a patio to the east of the main building where, you know, employees can take their breaks, and we feel that's just really important for this facility and for all work environments. Next slide. And this slide here is, is one of the, the prominent views that, that the public would see. Most of the other views are pretty well-hidden, and we'll talk about that in some of the other slides, and I will turn that over to Pete Rosato to maybe talk about some of the materials and some of the specifics of the elevations.
Great, thank you, Martin. If we could go back to that initial slide there, just the last one, please. Yeah, so, as Martin said, this is our, our main entry. So we'll have guest parking, staff parking, vendor parking here at the main parking lot. You can see the grade difference as we have steps up to our main entrance. We wanted to provide some offset to the building, so you could see that the entry is offset. We also made that a different color, which is the same color as the, the roof. It's called Cool Shell Gray, and the wall color is called Cool Gray Stone, and we have that on the walls and the, the downspouts. We have a canopy that is required by the California Green Code above our main door, and then you can see our retaining wall that takes us up into the main yard. Now you'll notice that this rendering from the initial application, this rendering, the building is straight. Our initial application, we had a turn in the building. We believe this is in substantial conformance with the initial submission, and helps provide a more efficient workflow. The staff space is here on the left side of the building, which is out of our camera view at this time. So next slide. Correct. So this is more of the main building. You've seen a lot of these already, so I won't spend too much time on them. We have a 3 and 12 roof. You saw in the overhead renderings that we have locations for solar, should that be required, but the building is designed to receive solar panels and, and resist any loads from there. Next slide. This is our main building. So the, the rendering at the top, we have the, the four garage doors, those are into the service base, so that's for the public works and the, the golf shop. Next slide. Thank you. This is the building across the way with the three garage doors. Again, this holds some larger equipment, riding mowers, push mowers, some fertilizer equipment, et cetera. And this is the glorified carport, as Vanessa said. So there are some equipment that the association would like to protect from weather. So tractors or trailers, equipment such as that will be stored underneath this. There is a back wall, just one wall, that we have colored in the same Cool Gray Stone as the rest of the project. And this is our canopy above the canopy wash and fertilizer station. Pretty simple, again, just, it's a metal building with a shallow roof slope.
So just a few additional things I want to talk about on the screening. Again, you know, the, the general project is encompassing the, the existing kind of operational envelope, if you will, and I think Vanessa kind of touched on that our, our site coverage is about the same. Couple things to note, to the south, that kind of green oval, that's an existing large earthen berm that kind of obscures view to the golf course. You also have another large earthen berm to the north that also obscures that view to the golf course. And then to the west, we have significant buffers of existing trees that will remain after the project, as well as a significant stand of oak canopy that will remain to the west of the main two buildings up on top. Next slide. The landscape plan, we're trying to accentuate some of those screening opportunities there. Again, to the east, to the clubhouse, again, we already have that natural vertical drop in grade differential, which helps kind of hide this facility and make it more private, but we are adding additional shrubbery and trees. And to the north, next to our parking lot, per county requirements, we'll be adding some finger islands with additional plantings, trees, and adding some additional trees for screening to screen probably the closest neighbor to the existing facility out there. So if you've been out to the clubhouse currently, they have a really robust, nice palette of different plantings, and they're trying to mimic that and carry that over into this facility on that east and northern east side especially. Next slide. And so I just want to, you know, reinforce, this is, this is a really important project for Lake Wildwood. Again, they're trying to stretch their dollars to create the best, most effective facility that they can, to continue a really high quality of service for the community down there. And, you know, we've integrated in a lot of really important things operationally. It's going to create a better work environment and definitely more aesthetically improved and more efficient. And, next slide. Is that it? Okay. So with that, I just want to say we're in full agreement with the staff reports, the mitigation measures and conditions of approval as proposed from staff. We think those are appropriate. Maybe one clarification, I just want to add, I think Vanessa talked about it a lot, the DTSC comment. We don't normally see a comment letter from DTSC. There's, just for full clarity, there's no known toxics onsite on this. Normally, you'd see a condition like that on a site that maybe has something known. But I guess what we want to do through that is work with DTSC to their satisfaction, to make sure that we're, we're not importing additional soils, and we're not exporting soils, so we don't have that concern, but we will be evaluating the existing buildings, make sure that there's not any, you know, lead materials, things like that. So that's going to be evaluated, and we will work with DTSC to get through their comfort with their condition. Other than that, I think the other conditions were rather straightforward, and we're available for your questions and comments, and hopefully we can answer them for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I guess before we get to questions from the commissioners, we will open up the public hearing. This again is a public hearing, so any members of the public here that wish to comment on this agenda item before us today, now's the time to do it. If you do, please approach the podium, give us your name and address. You have three minutes to speak. Okay. Seeing none, hearing none, I will close the public comment portion and move on to questions, comments from the commissioners. Commissioner Garst, we'll start with you.
Thanks. I have a couple of questions for the applicant. I was wondering if the existing landscape berms were being altered anyway, expanded, or otherwise?
Yeah, originally in our, our application, there was a slight amount per our preliminary grading plan of export, and we thought, oh, we'll just, rather than have an exporter off-haul, we would add some of that maybe to those berms, and then plant upon further refinement, because we are working on construction documents and refining that. It looks like it's not going to be necessary where the lower yard and the way that that grades out, we're going to, we're going to have an equal net balance for the project site.
Okay. And continuing on with questions for you, the, there's 25 parking stalls that are required. It looks like half, about half of them, or two-thirds of them are kind of to the northeast of the site, where a majority of the landscaping is occurring, and then another nine stalls is locate, are located on the west side.
Yeah, in the lower yard.
So those are part of the required parking. Why is there no landscaping over in that area, or shade trees being required per landscaping, parking lot requirements?
That area in the lower yard, again, some of that's going to be stored for fleet vehicles, and it's kind of, you know, employee use down in there. We definitely aren't short on overall parking, or for landscaping coverage, so we have our required landscaping, but it didn't seem as appropriate to put finger islands down in the area that is generally a gravel lower yard there. So our, our plan was to be more robust with our landscaping where public and most of the people would actually see it.
So is that not required?
Commissioner Garst, if I can humbly respond, I also wanted to chime in and say exactly that. Landscaping in industrial outdoor yards aren't particularly conditioned by our code to have landscape, and therefore, we did not require any landscape because of that.
Okay, great. I was wondering if a noise study was required for this application in terms of HVAC equipment, new HVAC equipment, and I'm not sure if, like, traffic studies would be required? Just wondering about that.
So I'm hearing the question in several components, and I'm going to aim to make sure I address all of them. One that I heard you mentioned was the HVAC equipment. HVAC equipment for the site is actually proposed to be conditioned entirely within the building, fortunately, specifically within the primary maintenance building. So there won't be any exterior HVAC equipment, such as generators or large HVAC industrial equipment outside of the building. And I'm sorry, can you please remind me of the second component?
I was just wondering if a noise study would be required for, like, additional traffic? I'm, I'm not sure, I'm just asking.
So this project is a replacement and minor expansion. Due to the project not intensifying the use at all and solely continuing in its current intensive use, a traffic study was not acquired.
Okay.
I, I can add to that a few.
Sure.
Just one important thing to note, we were more proactive, I think, on the noise thing. Our onsite generator does have a sound dampening enclosure that was specified for that, and that will be below the necessary DBA per-county standards. So we proactively kind of, instead of doing the noise study of like, what if, are we going to exceed something, we more proactively kind of said, look, we're going to make sure that we're below county requirements for DBA. And some of the other equipment that is programmed into the site, such as compressors and those type of things are interior. So the site generally probably gets better, and as Vanessa said, it's a continuing use, but we, we're proactive in making it better.
Okay. And then I was just wondering if you can explain why a conditional use permit is required for this property, given that it is a, like, seemingly like-for-like use of what's existing?
Commissioner Garst, I agree, it's a little foggy seemingly, because it really is a replacement of a use that's continuing in its existing intensity. So discretionary projects per CEQA, which this is one of them, it's heard before the discretion, before the discretion of you all, the project itself supersedes 10,000 square feet in size, which is one of the thresholds in CEQA that says if you're above this, you're subject to going through the CEQA process. In addition to square footage, the handling of the hazardous materials and chemicals of this site, including motor oil, propane, and a couple other things, also triggers the requirement of a use permit being required for this project.
Thanks for that clarification.
Commissioner Garst, I'll also add that because of the expansion, the county's code has criteria for certain levels of expansion that are allowed as an administrative or a by-rite process, and as Vanessa mentioned, this did supersede that from square footage.
Great, thanks for that clarification. Speaking of hazardous materials, there's been, there was some mention of, like, a soil-sand separator onsite. Is that existing, or is that a new piece of equipment that's being installed at the wash station?
Oh.
I'll let you take this one, Martin.
Okay. We have the vehicle wash area, if, if that's what you're referring to, and Pete can maybe talk about the clarifier and some of the state-of-the-art equipment for filtration and those type of things?
Thank you, yes. If you, there we go. So this is essentially an above-ground clarifier. So there is a drain, in this example, the drain's right here, and so in, in this facility, the vehicles would be washed under this canopy here, and then it goes into this essentially sump pump and pumped into this clarifier, so this would clean all the, you know, the gunk and sediments out of, out of that, and then that would get cleaned out occasionally by a, by a service.
Okay, great. That's all I had.
Thank you.
Thank you. So first of all, I want to recognize that I also was on a tour with Mr. North on, to see the facility, so I appreciate that. Really helped me understand it. Over to you, Vanessa. I want you to know that public speaking is one tough thing, so I just want to recognize that you did a fine job here with us today.
Thank you.
Sure. Now Vanessa, talk to me, I, I'm just sort of fascinated why this, I, I understand why Lake Wildwood was, was zoned R1, but knowing the clubhouse is a footprint and this facility has been a footprint since Wildwood was developed, why did it, why does it stay as an R1 zoning during this, during, since we've known that it's not really R1?
Commissioner McEachran, that's a great question. So the Lake Wildwood community really has a history of its own. It began initially in the 1970s, pre-community plans and other, pre-community area plans. So it really is in a lane of its own and has kind of followed suit with the current legislation we have for our jurisdiction today. It really is a grandfathered use, and because of the community area overlay on this area, a majority of the site has been, remained as single-family residential, so I agree with you, it does seem odd that, hey, it's industrial, but it has an R1 zoning over it. seem odd that, hey, it's industrial, but it has an R1 zoning over it. And I hope that I've explained that as best I could, but I also wanted to offer to Tyler if anything else needs to be said.
Members of the commission has a planned development. You notice there's a PD overlay. And so as a part of that, amenities associated with the overall planned development are allowed. So Lake Wildwood has a number of facilities in addition to this one, including parks that are also zoned R1.
Uh huh. And so, just for my curiosity, so I lived in Altisira for numbers, number of years. And I know that there's a commercial strip in there. Is that, is in Altisira, is that all zoned R1 too, as a planned development, or no?
It's not. It's similar to the red area you see on this map. It's a commercial.
Okay. Thank you very much. So I have a couple, a few questions. So the surface in the lower parking lot, could you tell me what, I mean, I gather it's some type of gravel or something. Is that correct?
Yeah, it'd be a Class II aggregate base type surface. And it would give the ability of a structural section that if they wanted to potentially pave it in the future, they could.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I will say, the circulation here is much improved. I mean, the circulation currently is non-existent. So that, that's really a great improvement. But the building now, the whole site plan has sort of shifted, I don't know, 20 degrees or something. It's sort of, where today, if you're at Lake Wildwood Clubhouse, you actually look into sort of the equipment yard. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah. Depending on your vantage point, there's different.
Sure. But you're sort of at the front door of the Lake Wildwood Clubhouse, and you're looking down, you're sort of looking right into the equipment yard.
At certain vantage points, yes.
Yeah. And so this, by turning it, actually, the vantage point now will be this side of the building. I mean, you really won't see really in to the equipment yard. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, from the north vantage point, I think that's where we wanted to accentuate the more pleasing view.
So this is 21 feet high. Can you, what, what are the heights of the existing buildings in there? About, about the same?
Nine to a plate. And then with a, yeah, probably 10-foot plate height and probably six and 12-type roofs from the 70s era, the existing, they weren't very tall, if you see the existing buildings out there.
Right. Okay. And I will say that, I mean, it's a compliment again to you that, that you have a bunch of neighbors who would think that this would be really intrusive on their view and their life and everything else. And that no neighbors sent letters, no neighbors are here today, and that you worked, or at least, I know Mr. North worked with the neighbors to ensure that they're in, they're A-OK.
Yeah, there was inquiries during the process of neighbors that were interested, hey, you know, what are you guys going to be doing over there? And Mr. North did work with some of those neighbors, kind of showed them what was going on. And I think, in most cases, right, if people understand what something is, it's, it's, it's less of a concern. And I think those got worked out. There was a couple of color changes that were modified in the project. And again, a lot of attention on our detail on landscaping and different elements to basically keep the peace with the neighbors.
I find this humorous, that the men's room is designated on the plan, but I'm suspecting that the adjoining restrooms are women's restrooms. They didn't, they didn't get equal treatment here, but that's okay. Just as a, that's a smile meant to that. Now, could you talk about the temporary facilities? So there's going to be, when, when is it, when's planned construction for this taking place?
They'd like to start grading as soon as possible. We're kind of anticipating maybe a start of grading operations in June. And again, you can't ever assume that you're going to get an approval, but you, you like to plan for one. So they've been taking some operational planning. They want to set up some temporary facilities that are screened in that northern portion of the existing parking lot that is very well-contained. We don't have erosion problems, no tracking problems, those type of things, to where they can work functionally while these buildings are being constructed.
So some type of, you know, construction portables or something?
Correct. And they've moved some of the operations to other areas in their Lake Wildwood as a, as an interim workaround.
Okay. And finally, I see you have one electric vehicle station. I don't know what the code provides these days. Could you address that for a minute?
Yeah, the green code, California green code, it requires a certain percentage of your spaces to be EV capable. So we are going to be running, I think it's four, if my memory serves me right, that we are basically making EV capable, where we run electrical facilities, boxes, those type of things. The code as of July, post-July, the code goes to where those capable spaces all have to have chargers. Whereas right now, you don't have to install all the chargers, you just have to make them capable. So we have every intent to meet what the code is at the time that we submit. And they also, some of their fleet operations, some of the equipment that they use in the golf course themselves require charging stations. And those are being planned for internally.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Millman?
So, can you put the slide up that showed, kind of like the yellow one, but without the yellow overlay?
Yes, Commissioner Millman, I'll do that in just one moment.
I think you had one that was even further out. Thanks. So it strikes me that there's a lot of oak cover throughout this entire area, except for the golf course and this yard. And we're talking about removing 35 oaks and removing 53 trees and replacing them with, if I counted right, 16 red bud and 12 oak. Is that correct? Ish?
Commissioner Millman, I'm going to bring that landscape plan right up for us to reference together. So it looks like there's about 10 more or less red bud. And there's also a Sherman oak proposed along the west side of the primary maintenance building.
So then the existing building is how many square feet?
The existing building is roughly 7,000 square feet in size.
And so this one is 20,000?
The primary maintenance building is 10,000. And directly left of it is the enclosed storage building, which is 6,000 some square feet in size.
And the existing height, we decided was about?
I, Commissioner Millman, I can speak to the height. Both of the buildings in this slide are 28 feet in height, roughly two stories comparable to a residence. And then the accessory vehicle wash and fueling system in the interior of the industrial yard is 26 feet in height.
And the existing, we decided was how, how tall?
Approximately 20.
20. So this is eight feet taller. So whatever that works out to be, percentage-wise, right? What is a non-retail golf shop?
What that is, is a repair shop. So they'll have equipment from the, the golf crews will repair any golf carts or any maintenance equipments, tractors, and so on and so forth. So any equipment that the public works crew will not repair, will be repaired at the golf shop base.
So when you showed the slide of the elevation of the main building that faces the parking lot, so now that building is eight feet taller and pretty much a flat surface across there. I guess just overall, it really feels to me like we're removing trees, we're making a flatter surface across there, we're not replacing the trees. But there, I, it just feels to me like this, could you use additional landscaping?
Commissioner Millman, I hear what you're saying. I did want to point out in the slide that we have here, staff assumed somewhat of the same. I did want to highlight that additional details were recommended incorporated into the eastern side of that building, which faces this side. It's slightly lower in elevation. The proposed height is roughly equivalent to a two-story, single-family home. But if you would like to request any additional conditions, we can definitely hear them out and see if the applicant agrees.
And then at the berms, those are being, what, like hydrosprayed, but no, no actual plantings?
Hi, Commissioner Millman, I did want to say that the Northern Sierra Air Quality Management District did condition those landscape berms to be seeded and watered.
We aren't proposing to necessarily modify the berms as they're, they're currently seeded and already vegetated. And as I indicated, our, our site should balance and not need to place any material there. If we were to place material there, absolutely, we would reseed it and plant it. But our plan right now is to leave it in its current vegetated form, which offers significant screening from the golf course and the surrounding neighbors.
So at some point, somebody was talking about the oak overhang and said that oak overhang is hazardous? What is, what is it hazardous to?
Hi, Commissioner Millman, I can speak to that slightly before handing it off to our applicant to maybe clarify how it is. But I had a slide where I mentioned circulation of vehicles, including fleet vehicles and machinery that go in and out the project itself. There is mature canopy that hangs so low that when you are in these large vehicles and with anticipated construction on the horizon, the canopy actually hangs so low that equipment is driving through and under this canopy, which does pose as hazard concerns for employees traveling under it. I also wanted to offer our project applicant to maybe clarify anything that, that could be spotlighted more.
I guess the other thing that just should be noted is, the site, the site did not comply with, a lot of overhangs of the trees were currently over the existing roofs of the buildings in close proximity, not in compliance with current fire mitigation rules. So there was a concern there. It was some overgrowth. And our thought was, let's reinforce a significant stand, very healthy, and add to it. And that was the plan.
Thank you. So the, let's see. What measures are taken for the storage of hazmat and oil? That's all as dictated by fire and hazardous?
The Department of Environmental Health is responsible for the storage of fuels and other items such as at certain levels. But I believe our hazmat team is here if you want specific volumes that are, they regulate.
I think I'm okay. But thanks. The lighting, is that on, like, I saw that it was, is it specifically dark sky, or it's just pointed downward and?
Per Nevada County's code, their light, all lights must be downward facing and fully shielded.
And are they on any sort of timers or light sensors? Like, do they, if there's nobody in the yard, does it stay fully lit, or does it go dark?
So we're in the process of designing that yard. Typically, what happens is they're on some sort of timer, and then it could dim. So if it doesn't sense any activity, they will dim or turn off. If public works have to come in to the facility for an emergency, they'll come back on with a sense of motion.
So similar to a retail parking lot?
Yeah.
I was looking for EV charging. I see the one on the upper, on the, I guess it's employee parking or, excuse me, or visitor parking. But I didn't see any for the fleet vehicles. Is there any, is that taken into account, fleet vehicles being switched over in the future? This seems like it'd be the time to do it.
The golf equipment and the covered storage is all EV capable and charges in there.
Thank you.
And then in addition to the green code requirements, in the primary space, you can see the EV van space that we're providing. And I think there's four spaces that we'll be making EV capable in compliance with the green code.
Thank you. Vanessa, you mentioned that there was an offer to participate in something that was declined. I'm, could you tell me what that was? I missed it.
Commissioner Millman, I'm going to pull that slide right up. But as I get ready to pull up the slide, I'll speak exactly to it. So when the initial study was routed for the public comment period, one of the comments we received in return was from the Department of Toxicity and Substance Control. Their comments were very minor. The specific requirement you were mentioning was the condition for appropriate sampling to be done. As mentioned, both in the presentation and from our project applicant, post-grading activities, any excess fill from the activities are proposed to be deposited into those existing landscape berms to further reinforce screaming, screening of the industrial yard. DTSC recommended that sampling be done prior to the dirt being deposited to screen for any type of hazardous particulates.
Thank you. The nesting survey, who does, who does that for you?
We'd use Greg Matuzak, a local biologist and arborist. And he basically goes out, surveys the trees, makes sure that they're not nesting, and gives a clearance memorandum to planning staff and the building department prior to issuance of permits.
Thank you. I think that's all my questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Millman. Okay, I have a, it's been brought up here, some questions about the height of the buildings, as well as the aesthetics of the look from the roadway. It's, having spent some time there on the golf course, it's my recollection that this piece of property, the footprint of this piece of property from the access, what's the name of that road again?
Cotton Tail.
Cotton Tail.
Cotton Tail. That goes up to the clubhouse is lower in elevation.
Quite a bit.
So it's basically down in a ravine, so to speak, from that roadway. And as it sets now, again, it's my recollection that if you were to look over in that direction, you'd look right over the tops of those buildings. They're hardly noticeable as they exist. And I would then perceive that adding an additional eight feet to them, if we're going to use that as a number, would probably be less than significant in that view.
To your point, based on line of sight, this view that we're kind of looking in the lower right, you wouldn't be able to see into the operational area. You're, you're just going to kind of look over the top.
Great. And then also, I'm, I'm always curious when we are dealing with projects inside these self-governing communities, as to what the internal process is with your membership. So do you notice folks within the Lake Wildwood community of this project? Do you have public hearings? Are they allowed to speak? And is that, and do you, do you deal with all that prior to it getting to us? Is that why we see no one, none of the neighbors here?
Yes. Thank you, planning commissioners. By all means, there are numerous public meetings held, constant information going out on status of the projects, noticing for upcoming meetings on a consistent basis. So what we try to do is to get its many issues out of the way before we come to the county itself. So hopefully, by the time you start to see our, our product, it has been well-vetted with our own citizens in advance.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can we get the name and?
Yeah.
Record, please.
I'm sorry. Robert Richardson, general manager.
Thank you, Robert. Oh, my, my final question has nothing to do with much, but this, this facility there, is that the maintenance public works facility for the entire community, or are there other satellites around the community?
For the whole facility, yeah.
It, it is the one and only, basically.
Get you a more detailed answer?
Come on down, Jim.
I'm Jim North, the superintendent of public works. Yes, that is the main facility. It houses public works and golf maintenance. There's a small contingent of three employees over, next to the community center, a small building, more, more closely located to the, the park and the community center. Those are the only two locations we have.
Great. Thank you. And I guess lastly, I can attest that the existing facility is probably the ugliest thing in Lake Wildwood. thing in Lake Wildwood. That being said, do we have any further questions or comments from the commissioners? None? We can't? Commissioner Millman?
I think before it went to vote, if we could add a condition to add some additional landscaping.
Commissioner Millman, may I ask if there is any specific landscape measures you would like to have added and in any specific locations?
It just seems like we're creating a yard that does not meet the shading requirements of pretty much anything. And I understand that we're running a large vehicles around that, but if we're also taking out trees and then we're not shading, it seems like there's probably some other places that trees could go in this project acreage.
Commissioner, with your direction, I think we could augment condition A9, which is a landscape condition, to request and require additional landscaping be provided in the yard areas and augmented throughout the site, provide additional shading.
Thank you.
I'd also like to clarify that there are conditions of approval regarding lighting, to require lighting be turned off at 11:00 PM, also to use dimmers. I also want to clarify that 28 feet is below the county's threshold for height in the R1 zoning district, which is three, 35 feet or three stories. And then I also wanted to point out before taking action that we did receive comments from the Northern Sierra Air Quality District, as Vanessa did mention. And as a result of those comments, we made amendments to mitigation measure 3B. They were minor clarifying amendments, and therefore, if the planning commission chooses to elect to approve this project, that you take those actions that are, and the recommendation that's shown in your memo that's dated for 11/24, not the ones in the staff report, just for the first item. Are we ready to entertain a motion?
I did the last one, so Joe?
Can you put up the recommendations that we're, from staff? I make a motion that we adopt the proposed mitigated negative declaration and mitigated monitoring and reporting plan. Is that correct, that that is the amended version?
Excuse me, that is not the amended version. There's one additional section of CEQA that's cited. It's on page three of your memo.
Uh huh, okay. So how do you want me to change this?
Um, could you read off the memo or?
Okay, sure. From 3B, is that what you want?
Correct. It's on page three. There's a revised recommendation, recommended action.
Okay, I got. Okay. So then, I make a motion, as a result of these proposed revisions, to the proposed initial study mitigation, mitigated negative declaration. This one? Okay, sorry. My apologies. Okay. So I make a motion to adopt the proposed mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting plan, EIS 23-0012, as amended and provided in attachment two, pursuant to section 1507, 3.5 subsection C, section 1, 15074 and 15097 of the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines, and make findings A through D.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. Shelley, if you'll call the vote, please.
Commissioner Garst?
Yes.
Commissioner McAtier?
Aye.
Commissioner Millman?
Yes.
Chair Mastertonato?
Yes.
The motion passes.
So then I make a motion to approve the oak tree management plan, MGT 23-0031, subject to the recommended conditions of approval and mitigation monitoring plan, making findings A through B.
I'll second that.
Is that modified?
Are we?
According to the conversation we just had?
Yeah.
The modification would be in the next action.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Shelley, if you'll call the vote, please.
Commissioner Garst?
Yes.
Commissioner McAtier?
Aye.
Commissioner Millman?
Yes.
And Chair Mastertonato?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The motion passes.
Um, okay, so how are we changing this one? Is there now an M?
Commissioners, I believe the motion should reflect the proposed amendment to condition A9 to add augmented landscaping throughout the yard.
So if I just say conditions of approval, amended conditions of approval?
Correct.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the proposed use permit, CUP 23-0010, to allow a replacement maintenance facility, subject to the recommended, amended recommended conditions of approval, shown in attachment 1, making findings A through L.
Second that.
We have a motion in a second. Shelley, if you'll call the vote, please.
Commissioner Garst?
Yes.
Commissioner McAtier?
Aye.
Commissioner Millman?
Yes.
And Chair Mastertonato?
Yes. The motion passes. Congratulations, folks. Um...
Mr. Chair?
Oh, we're subject to a 10-day appeal?
Thank you.
I'm getting it. One request, when you start this project, there's a yellow number four Callaway golf ball with three stripes on it. Hey, it was the best shot of my life. I hit it off the number two tee box. It would have hit the green if I had hit it in the right direction, but it's there somewhere. If you could find it for me, I'd appreciate it.
We'll be looking for it.
Congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Much-needed project there.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Okay, thanks, everyone. Um, okay, moving on. What's going on, Brian? Do I assume that our meeting on the 25th is no longer scheduled?
Commissioners, we do have another item, so we will have that meeting. As you recall, at our last meeting, the Conger use permit was continued to April 25th. However, that application was withdrawn. The media beat me to it, but you probably saw it in the paper. But that application was withdrawn, but we do have an amended MAP application, fairly minor project in the South County area that we do intend to bring forward on the 25th. So we will have the meeting, but it just won't be for that continued item, it'll be for a new item. Beyond that, I don't believe we have any projects scheduled for the month of May at this point in time.
So I have one question, if it's okay. Mr. Conger, did he come in and try to meet with you to sort of go over, let's figure out the solution, or did that never happen?
Um, Mr., or Commissioner McAtier, he did come in.
He did.
And we did discuss it with him.
Uh huh.
And he elected to withdraw his project.
Okay. Thank you.
Brian, what did you just say about May?
Uh, I don't anticipate that we'll have any meetings. We don't have anything on tap right now. I guess the second meeting in May is far enough out that something could come up, but I don't anticipate anything on the, that we can see at this point.
Okay, anything more?
Shelley, you're off to public works, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. I started three weeks ago.
Are you, are you the new director over there, or what?
Not at this time.
So there's a, there's a chance we may see you wandering around the building at some point?
I hope so.
Great. Thanks for all you've done.
Thank you, Chair Mastertonato. I appreciate it.
We're going to miss you. Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Moved.
We're adjourned, 3:43.
And?
We could appeal it.
And how about all this?